Well, to order of the Carney School District Board of Education meeting, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Roll call, please. Matt Maker?
Here.
Jason Clint?
Here.
Jake Kinnison?
Here.
Christina Lindsay?
Reese Hatzel?
Here.
Nick Fuskis?
Yeah.
Lauren Daly? Here. We have a quorum. So, adopt and move the agenda?
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second?
All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. School Spotlight. We have Southview, Dr. Parks.
Hello, good evening. Thanks for having us tonight. Tonight, we have Rachel Terrell. She is our vocal music teacher at Southview. And we have our Southview Singers. So, they are going to all file in. And Mrs. Terrell will say a few words. And they have a couple of songs for you to get you in the holiday spirit. Thank you for letting us come and perform for all of you. Oh, sorry. Thank you for letting all of us come and perform for all of you. I have the Holiday 3rd, 4th, and 5th Grade Southview Singers. We got to sing at the football game for homecoming with the high school choir, which was very exciting. We are also getting to sing at Carney Magical Night, where we get to carol during the parade on the 13th. So, we have another performance coming up in just a few weeks. But we have performed two songs to sing for you tonight. We're going to sing Sleigh Ride and Silent Night. Both of these, we have ventured into a cappella, which is a new, a new, something new for us, which is going to be an exciting adventure. Is everybody ready? Do you hear my notes? One, two, ready and... Jingle, 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 cheer! Sleigh ride, jingle, 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 jingle! It's lovely when you're together with you! Outside, the snow is falling and friends are coming to you! Come on, it's lovely when you're together with you! Yippee-ya, 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 let's go! Let's look at the show! We're riding along under the snow! Yippee-ya, 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 this friend just hold your hand! We're riding along with the song of a winter fairy! Our cheeks are nice and cozy and comfy, cozy are we! First, gather up together like birds of a feather would be! Let's sing the lovely chorus and sing a chorus or two! Come on, it's lovely when you're together with you! There's a perfect party at the Marmot Club! We're great! It'll be the perfect ending of a perfect day! We'll sing the songs we love to sing without a single stop! At the fire risk, where we watch the chess match walk! The clock is a happy feeling, nothing in the world can buy! We'll be passed around the coffee and the pumpkin pie! It'll never be like a picture frame of a fairy or a duck! These wonderful things are things to remember all through our lives! Just feel the same, oh, jingle, 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 jingle! It's lovely when you're together with you! Outside, the snow is falling and friends are coming to you! Come on, it's lovely when you're together with you! Yippee-ya, 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 let's go! Let's look at the show! We're riding along under the snow! Yippee-ya, 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 this friend just hold your hand! We're riding along with the song of a winter fairy! Our cheeks are nice and cozy and comfy, cozy are we! First, gather up together like birds of a feather would be! Let's sing the lovely chorus and sing a chorus or two! Come on, it's lovely when you're together with you! Jingle, 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 jingle!
Whoa! Thank you. Can I meet?
Silent night, oh, holy night! All is calm, all is bright! Round and round, the birds of love under a shroud! Holy infant, tender and mild! Sleep in heavenly peace! Sleep in heavenly peace! Still here and not, are there gone? All is strange, nights are long! Look, the sky is gray, are there gone? Holy baby, how you been? Shout to the king, the shepherd! Shout to the king, the shepherd! Everybody, so thank you for coming. Thank you for having us. Thank you so much. Stay.
Don't go anywhere, because we want the parents to get a chance to get a photo too. So, hang tight after I do that. All right, big smiles, take my way. Hang on, take a look, make sure. One more, just awesome, you guys did great.
Good job.
One more, one more. Parents, see if you can trail them.
I see this so well.
It was fun, just sit down. It's not like, I wanted to jump on the turkey burger. Get your hair a little bit.
Sleep in... You gotta get this, otherwise you're sleeping in heavenly peace. It's gotta be peace. It's warm, but it's not the same.
That music room is right there. I hear it.
Okay.
Really? Just in case.
They're practicing.
Did you say no-no or something?
I said something.
That makes sense.
I didn't say, everybody, okay.
She said, Mom, you saw me do last year.
Oh, I gotcha.
Did you finish it, Jason?
He's finished.
I'll ask.
What's his name?
Nine. Here. I'll ask.
Very good question. I'd like to ask it one of the... But I want you to do it. I'm more than happy to let you do it.
Of course you are.
Well, that was fun. That was great. Thank you. Next, we have no public comment. And so, after that, the next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. And hi, Brian, if you're watching, we miss you. But you're doing great.
Well, normally, for my superintendent comments, I don't do a presentation. But this month, I thought I would give a brief presentation. Just like we saw such amazing talent before us, I think there's also reasons to celebrate. So, with this is a brief PowerPoint presentation I shared with staff last week. So, I just wanted to go through that with you. And really, going to focus on two things. We're going to talk about our annual survey results. And Ray does a much deeper dive on this. It will do it justice. And you'll hear about that in December. Is that right, Ray? And then, Dr. Utech is also going to talk at length about some APR data also in December. But I think it's timely that I share it with you. And allow the community to see it as well. So, annually, we provide a survey that goes to students. It goes to staff. It goes to parents. And it also goes to patrons. And really, some of the key questions, it focuses in on culture, climate, what we, what we value. And really, what we believe is that culture and climate really set the conditions for student learning. And that's part of our strategic plan. You can see Objective 1.2 there. So, I'm really going to just hit the highlights for you and show you some what we think are pivotal pieces in the culture, climate data in the annual survey. And so, one of the questions that we ask on an annual basis, what's your overall perception of the Carney School District? So, from last year to this year, we've seen a pretty significant increase, going from 3.84 to 4.03. And this really indicates, this is on a Likert scale, 1 to 5, and it identifies the number of people who indicated on the survey that they felt it was the top two indicators, that they agreed or strongly agreed. Next slide really takes a look at what do they feel about the quality of the educational experience in Carney School District? Again, moving all the way up to 4.25. This question really dials into, it's just a student-specific question. Do you feel like you are accepted and belong within the school district? And again, that needle is moving in the right direction. Ideally, we would like to see that at a 5. But again, this is work for us to continue to dive into. But it's a strong indicator that our students feel valued when they're at school. Other more specific questions that we ask students, next slide. Am I proud to be, attend my school? Again, significant increase over last year. Do I feel cared for and supported? Again, increase. I feel that I'm treated with dignity and respect. My school includes me in decision-making. And that's a real celebration, actually, from data that started in 2022. And that was probably closer to, Ray, maybe 3.5. So, that indicator has really moved pretty significantly over the last few years. So, again, lots of celebrations about not only how we're perceived, but how students feel when they're within the school setting. So, we're going to move on to the next slide and talk about academic success and student support. We know that this is why we're here, as an educational system. This is our calling. This is our, reflects our belief system. This is why we show up to work every day. And it's our core business. We need to make sure that we, students are performing at high levels of achievement. And one of the ways we measure this is we look at the Academic Performance Report. Or this is basically DESI's annual report card on how we perform as a school district. And this requires a little bit of explanation. So, it's really kind of ranked on a 100% scale. The unfortunate piece to that, it's the report card almost looks as though schools are ranked on an A to F scale. And that's really not how it's intended to be interpreted, although that tends to be the walkaway. 30% of the score is really based on continuous improvement. And that's really what's the district doing? Are we strategic planning? Are we submitting our audit report on time? Core data on time? So, it's more compliance in nature. And that's about 30% of the score. And districts tend to score about the same. 70% of the score really takes a look at student performance. Half of that is on status. How do our kids just test overall? And the real, the real challenge is in growth. And this is a fairly new metric with under MSIP 6. And what's challenging about growth is it really makes the APR score extremely highly volatile. DESI uses a statistical analysis developed out of University of Missouri. Not only how did we grow against ourselves from one year to the next, but how do we compare against other districts? And it makes it really challenging for us to communicate that transparently to our patrons. And again, what we've seen over the, you know, since '22, since the inception of MSIP 6, is that score can swing pretty dramatically. It can swing up or down. We've seen as much as 10-plus points. So, it's important to really be aware of that. Since we've started in '22, we've scored between 86 and 89, which puts us in the top 10% of the state. We've done very, very well. So, with that, we're going to go and talk about the 2025 APR score. So, again, we compare ourselves against 12 other school districts within the Kansas City metro area. Our APR score really swung to the positive. We ended up at 95.2, significant gains. And again, that puts us at the top of our peer group in the Kansas City area. It also puts us tied for 10th place compared, within the state of Missouri, over 550 school districts and charter schools. So, outstanding performance. And we can't be more proud of our students and our teachers for all the work that went into this. So, next slide. One of the things that the APR also provides is a three-year composite. And truthfully, with the volatility of the annual score, I think there's, I think there's benefit in us really looking closely at the three-year composite. So, last year, a three-year composite was 87.8 with a 95.2. This year, we went up to 90%. Next slide. And you'll see, when we compare our three-year composites, that also puts Carney at the top of the Kansas City metro area. Again, lots of reasons to celebrate. That also puts us in the top 4% within the state. So, again, what that shows is Carney academic performance, and I'm showing that it's sustainable over time, which is a huge, huge, huge accolades going to students and teachers. And it really demonstrates a system that's focused on teaching and learning. And this is, again, our teachers are very familiar with standards. Our teachers are creative. Our building principals have created a culture within our schools that's focused on instruction and supports students. Our academic services team, that was with Jennifer Kopp and Ellie Stewart, now joined by Dr. Utech, really focuses in on the right work. Dr. McMainz is very intentional about hiring the right people for the school district. Eric Nolan is very intentional about looking at classroom environments so kids can learn and thrive. I just want to celebrate this as a system approach to really academic success. So, lot to celebrate here. Very, very proud of the work that our staff and our students are able to accomplish on an annual basis. So, very, very thankful. So, with that, I'm also going to read through, and I'm sorry I'm taking a little bit longer tonight, but there's a lot of celebrations. Long list here. Carney High School Football. They are conference title, district title, and state football quarterfinals. And they will be playing Warrensburg this Saturday at 1:00. Carney High School Boys Swim and Dive. 11th consecutive conference title. Two state titles for Whittaker-Stewart, and 8th place at state. Carney High School Girls Cross Country, district title, 7th at state. Carney High School Boys Cross Country, 4th at district, 10th at state. Carney High School Cheer, 3rd at state. Carney High School Band, 34 members earned honors at the 2025 All-District Band Auditions. Carney High School Softball, conference title, district title, 2nd at state. Carney High School Theater, successful production of Roald Dahl's Charlie and the Chocolate Factory. Carney High School Volleyball, district title, advanced quarterfinals at state. Carney High School Choir, nine students earned all-state choir honors. Carney High School Girls Golf, conference title, and sent three athletes to state. It's impressive. Very, very thankful. Very unique.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. All right, next, we have the consent agenda.
Move that the consent agenda be approved as presented?
Second?
All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Next, we have information items. The audit report. You got here just in time. Good job. See you, Brian.
Good evening. I'm Brian Eckhoff with Westbrook and Company. I'm here for PowerPoint.
Hang on, my bad. Well, I think we had a draft.
Yeah, it's gonna say draft.
It's gonna say draft. Okay.
I'll talk about that while you're grabbing it.
Yeah, please do.
So, it's a little bit different this year. We are required to audit your federal programs. That's because you have more than $750,000 of federal expenditures. Our rulebook for doing that is the OMB Data Compliance Supplement. It's issued every May, give or take. It still has not been issued for this year. So, we are not allowed to actually release your federal program audit. So, it's going to be a little bit different this year. It's going to be stamped draft right now. You won't actually get to approve the audit tonight. We are waiting until about December 1st. Once December 1st hits, we are going to actually split the reports. Then, you will have a financial statement audit to approve at your December meeting, so that you can send that into DESI. And then, once we receive the compliance supplement, we will give you that report. And I'm hoping that we can just put it back in the financial statements and you can reapprove that at a later date. The federal audit is actually due to the OMB Data Compliance, January 31st. So, my hope is that we have something by then and that at your January meeting, you can approve the federal audit. I just don't know. We have no guidance. We have a draft of the final document, but we don't have anything telling us when they're actually going to issue it. So, that's why it's stamped draft this year. I have it on a flash drive.
Well, it's just, I have, because it's PowerPoint, I gotta put it in a Google.
Okay.
So, it'll just... No memento. Sorry. Talk quietly amongst yourselves. Ellie, you want me to just drive for a minute? Because otherwise, I'm going to have to put it in the thing. You're going to have to refresh.
Brian, while we wait, what's the, do we know what the issue is with the holdup on?
That's the big question.
Like, yeah, what, like, is there an issue with the guidance or something?
In the school world, there's no new programs. So, there's nothing new. There's no COVID dollars or anything like that. Federal world, we're, you know, we're the school district. That's where we focus on. So, federal, maybe there is new items that they're dealing with. But the AICPA has written multiple letters to them, basically saying, hey, we have the final draft. Why are we not just issuing it? And there's no response coming out.
My past experience usually tells me that it's like, there's an approach issue, that there could be, you know, potential for, like, guidance discussion of changing. So...
My assumption is with nothing new for school districts, we're going to be fine. We're not going to have to any additional auditing or anything like that. But yeah, I'm in the same situation you are in thinking. And it's just a matter of getting it to finally release it. All right. So, as you can see, this is the independent audit report. And I'm sorry, it has the terrible draft across the front. We have to do that required by our standard. So, if you look through that, you'll see that the red box says, presented fairly. So, this is a clean audit opinion or a good audit report. So, exactly what you want to see on your audit of financial statements. This is the statement of activities. It's kind of a different financial statement because it has your expenditures down the left-hand side, offset by revenues in the middle of the page, to show the net cost on the right-hand side. And while we were in COVID, everybody talked about how we were making money on food service. Now, we are post-COVID, and we're back to losing money on food service. So, that's the one we usually highlight here. And you can see that it's $278,000 is the decrease on food service this year. So, I'm seeing that statewide. Everybody's going back to the normal situation on food service. So, next slide's going to be your balance sheet. Through the four funds, you can see we had $40 million in assets across the three. So, Special Revenue Fund, that's your teachers' fund. Standard practice in school districts is to take that to a... Standard practice in school districts is to take that to a zero balance as of the end of the year. And then at the bottom of the page, you can see the various fund balances. And then next slide's actually going to give you the information on those. So if you look, you can see in the General Fund, we have several small balances for professional development and food service. And then down below, the assigned amount, so back, hold on, back up. On the food service, that is whenever you were making money on food service during COVID years. Since you made money, DESI requires you to track that, and as you lose money, that balance will go away. So you go back to the, there you go. So that 16,000 will actually be gone next year due to the loss that you're going to have this year in your food service. Professional Development, you're required to spend a certain dollar amount of your basic formula. If you don't spend that amount, you're required to track how much that is and carry it over to the next year. That's the $27,000. And then down below, you can see the Student Activities. It had $639,000. That's your clubs and organizations, things like that. The remaining balance in the General Fund is unassigned. That's your 10.4 million. That's for day-to-day operations of the district. Over on the right-hand side, Debt Service is always restricted for debt service. It can't be spent on anything else. And then your Capital Projects Fund, you had unspent bond proceeds of $21 million. And then the remaining balance in your Capital Projects Fund is always shown as assigned for future capital projects. That's the 1.3 million. So this is a statement of revenues and expenditures. This year, you can see we had revenues of $58 million and expenditures of 81. However, if you look down in the red box, the majority of that overspending occurred in your Debt Service Fund and your Capital Projects Fund. So that was the spend-down of those bond proceeds is what occurred. So you can see the Capital Projects Fund had a decrease in fund balance of $19 million. But if you look closer up, the facility acquisition and construction was $20 million. So that was a planned spend-down, basically. And then your General Fund had a decrease in fund balance this year of $913,000. So there was deficit spending in the General Fund, just not, if you look at the entire total amount, it's kind of large. You got to go to the operating fund and see that's $913,000. So the next slide is going to be a summary of your debt. Standard debt started the year with about $71 million, ended the year with about $63 million. And the next slide's going to give you all of the payments through the next 10 years. No balloon payments or anything, just your standard annual payments. Your Debt Service Fund is set up to take care of that, so nothing there to be alarmed or worried about. The next slide's going to show you the direct borrowings. Again, just standard payments on those for the next six years. This is a five-year comparison of your revenues. If you look at the fourth chart over, that's the federal. You can see the COVID dollars came in, and then the COVID dollars have gone away. So that is why we've gone from 7% down to 3% of federal. And you can see that, basically, you have continued to support the district with more and more local funds. So your local funds were significantly lower five years ago than they are now. And that's what I'm seeing statewide, basically, with most of my districts. This is a five-year comparison of your expenditures. Expenditures continue to rise. However, if you look at the chart, you can see that, basically, they're rising at the same percentage. Your salaries and benefits have consistently stayed about 75%. So they are increasing. They're just increasing at about the same rate as your other expenditures. This is a five-year comparison of your reserve ratio and your average daily attendance. Reserve ratio this year was 22.21. We consider that a healthy, financially stable school district. And then down below, you can see average daily attendance. It did decrease this year again. It's down to 3187, so 3,187. Something to keep an eye on, obviously, with the declining average daily attendance and the declining reserve ratio. We do want to monitor that, since average daily attendance does drive a significant amount of your revenues. Something you will have to keep an eye on going forward. While we're here, we look at Missouri laws and regulations. If we note any deficiencies or violations, we bring it to your attention. And then you can see here that it says it's fairly stated. So this is a clean opinion on the state side of things. While we're here, we also look at internal control. We don't give an opinion on internal control, but we use it in our risk assessment. If we note any deficiencies in internal control, we bring it to your attention. And if you read this, you'll note that it says we did not identify any deficiencies in internal control this year. This is the beginning of the report, how we believe it'll look for the federal programs. If you read this, it indicates there's no deficiencies. So it's a clean opinion on the federal side of things based upon the current compliance supplement, which we used last year's compliance supplement to do the federal program audit. If the new compliance supplement comes out with changes, we will then send our federal program auditor back to do the additional work. And then if we have a change in the opinion, I will come back and re-present to you guys so that we're all on the same page. Do not believe that'll occur, though. And then on this report, unmodified means clean opinion, good audit report. So exactly what you want to see. No checked all the way down, except for the bottom one, means there's no findings, no question costs. Towards the bottom of the page, you can see that we tested the special education cluster. That's where my auditor spent the majority of her time doing all her testing, going through your general ledger to make sure the expenditures were allowable. And then on the bottom, did you qualify as a low-risk auditee? The answer is no. When they wrote Uniform Guidance, they wrote it for accrual-based financial statements, and you guys are cash-based financial statements, just like 99% of the school districts in the state of Missouri. So you'll never qualify as a low-risk auditee. Don't switch to accrual-based financial statements. Just know that we'll have to audit a higher percentage of your federal programs because of it. So. And then none and none, no findings on the federal program side. So perfectly clean on all findings so far. Good year financially. You know, it was a little spend-down, but not much. So as clean as you can get on everything there. And then two things, and these are minor details that we just give you improvements, things that we see. The first one is the current state auditor. When they're doing state audits, they are making a recommendation to their districts. So I'm telling all my districts that you should implement this procedure so that you're covered. They're saying that you should put some sort of procedure in place to limit the date of how long your staff can modify your attendance. So if it's due a certain date, you should put a step in to then limit that they can only modify it so many days after the due date. A lot of attendance softwares, you just can log in whenever you want and modify it whenever you want. I've actually had other districts where they've modified prior years accidentally, and I haven't realized it. So I get the reason for going in and putting this in place. So this is just us telling you, you should set up an internal procedure to establish that. The second one is a budget item. And if you look at your budgeted items, on the Special Revenue Fund, there was overspending. It was to the tune of $66,000 on a $28 million fund. The reason being is because the budgets ran so lean. Those, you know, the expenditures were always wanting to be basically spot-on, and some salaries came in at the end of the year that actually put you over-budget by $66,000. So that is an item that I'm required to bring into your attention. So. Overall, it's a clean opinion. It's a good audit, just a couple items to make a improvement on. Questions for me?
Thank you much.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Next, we have Fund Project Update. That's a written report, right?
It is.
Okay. And then next, we have Financials.
Just a couple of quick comments while we try to pull up the latest fund balance projections. When I first came on in July, I told you, after looking at the numbers, I kind of felt like we're going to be just above 20% towards the end of the year. Again, trying to be a little conservative. You'll see I've kept with that same ending number for the last four months. I'm not going to change it yet. I'd done a deep dive, did some looking, some trends and stuff. I still, I am really confident we're going to hit the 20. I'm a little confident we'll get to 21. I don't think there's any way we get to 22, though. You know, ideally, we would like to try to at least get back to where we started, but I think we're going to dip just a little bit this year. I know Brian mentioned we already dropped to the tune of about $900,000 between the two years. Probably going to drop a little more this year. I did tweak the numbers towards the bottom, if you're following them closely. For the self-funded Fund V, it was brought up, you know, there were some negative numbers showing up, and obviously, that's rare when that would happen, when the credits come in. So what I did was I kind of figured what I think's going to happen for the year, and I do think we're going to lose a little ground in that fund. It's too early to tell, and the numbers are going to fluctuate so much from month to month. So I just kind of spread it out. And so I would focus more towards the ending balance and hope we don't cut into reserves. It would be nice if we could build reserves. There is no magic formula there for what's the right number. If you looked at other districts or size, I'm sure you would find some with lower cash balances and some with much, much higher cash balances. Obviously, the more you're carrying that fund, being self-funded, the better. I also, for construction, I, the numbers there were a lot bigger than what I anticipate us, or at least last month, were a lot bigger than I anticipate us spending this year. So I backed some of those projections down, and now showing a carryover balance of about $8 million by the time we get to the end of the year, and those will be put towards projects after July 1st. So any questions?
Mr. Schwinn, do you want to just mention, our year-end fund balance is based on fully funding the foundation formula?
That's a good point. It is based on, right now, we're getting funded at 6,900 SAT. We still anticipate, and it's, from everything I've heard, it should still go to 7,145. But because there's, we're not getting funded at that level just yet, it's anticipated a lot of our revenue will come in later in the year than now. If that does not happen, and we're at 6,900, then we probably are looking at a percentage of more like 20%, and it could even get below that. But right now, we have no indication that that'll get sliced significantly. But things can change, as we all know.
We just wanted to put that on your radar early.
Yep.
Doug, question on Fund V. I'm fascinated by Fund V, and I try and think of what's the most difficult question I can ask you every, every time. So I don't know, given what you just said, I don't think you'll be able to answer it. But you've got four, you're four months into Fund V, right? So a third of the year.
Yeah.
Your forecast, do you still feel confident in the kind of the way you forecast, or has there been things that have moved that you thought, gosh, I wouldn't have thought that would happen?
Well, the start of the year is usually the roughest part because you haven't hit the pooling limits yet, and so you have a lot of outflow. So I don't know what those numbers are because they're too small. I can't see them. But I'm sure it's, it looks a lot worse in the first four months, and then kind of gets a little better towards the end. And that's just because some of those high claimants will hit pooling points, and then we'll actually start getting some rebates and stuff back on pharmacy and some other items. So. Does that answer your question?
It does. You could, you could probably expect me to, I'll do a better job of trying to figure out what the forecast was the previous month and see if there's a huge difference between them, and then see if we can figure that out. But I just know that's something that I don't know that I quite understand as it moves, and I'm trying to better understand what it looks like.
Yeah. And it can swing fast, and it can swing fast both directions. You can have a really good month on claims and then just absolutely horrible one and swing $300,000 easily between two months, so.
And maybe Dr. McMains can add to this, but we continue to have high-cost claimants that will impact us for this school year.
Yeah. Early indications as far as claims so far is it's going to be a little on the high side. But things can change. So we could finish very strong. It's too early yet to tell, for sure. Great question.
When you talk about the other schools that you've looked at that do have these kind of programs, we're only in our second year. Is that right?
Yeah.
And some of the others probably been at it longer. So hopefully, I think the thought is, over time, that that builds up better.
Yeah. I, I mean, if you're asking me for a comfort level, I'd love to see at least a million, million-five setting in that account. And we're like halfway there. So it'd take a lot of work to get there, so.
On average, how long does it take to get there?
Well, if you have a really good year, it could happen in a year. If claims are down and you set your premiums just right, you can get it in a year. Only thing is, that good year could turn into a bad year and it evaporated. Just, it's, there's no exact science there. I mean, you can kind of trend it out and look at what's normal for the industry, but it's probably one of the hardest things to project.
Doug, I know we continue to talk about the legislation that's, that's passed in the, in the Missouri Senate and stuff like that. And I know as we get closer to year-end and we get a clearer picture of that, has that been included in your forecasts of future revenues? Do we have a better target of potentially what types of reductions we're going to see on that front?
The picture is getting clear. The one number that I'm, can't wait to see is that January tax payment where the bulk of our revenue hits, making sure that, it's a big number, making sure that comes in where we think it is. Once we get to January, I think the picture gets a lot clearer, and we'll probably know a little more whether the 7,145 is solid or not. So right now, everything that we know and heard is, it is. But a couple more months, and who knows what the climate might be.
We still have yet to receive final numbers from the county regarding Senate of 190 as well.
Yeah. Yeah. But I was at a meeting today with some of my colleagues, and they were talking about revenue estimates for the state. And I guess through October, it was plus $60 million, but then something happened in November really good, and it was like plus $180 million. I still wasn't quite for sure what caused it to jump so much, but these are just ahead of revenue estimates, and, you know, estimates can change. But so far, there was some positive numbers coming from the state. So I think it'll be hard for them to make cuts if revenues exceed expectations. And so far, that's what it's doing, so. All right. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Written Program Evaluation of Federal Programs for your review.
I have a question about the.
Yeah, well, it looked like it was a lot focused on the students that we're, you know, and the services we're providing. What does that look like if I'm a teacher and I have that student in my class? I don't know if that may be directly connected, but just curious.
Sure.
I'm hopeful it's more than Google Translate.
Cyrus can share a little bit more with you.
It is more than Google Translate.
That's great.
So as you know, we have one ELL teacher, and so she provides direct services to those students. She goes to all of the buildings, and then also, on like a consult basis, provides support to the teachers so they can essentially provide accommodations for the students that are ELL.
So she's working with them in their classrooms?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. It's pull-in, pull-out service, and it, different students get different things based on their level of.
So if I'm that student score teacher, I can use that teacher as a, as a resource to help me out? That's, that's how it's working together. I couldn't put that together with what? Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
All right. Next, we have Program Evaluation for Counseling.
Where I get to pull the mic down. All right. Well, thank you for your time tonight. I'm excited to highlight some of our staff members who are with us this evening. We have Rebecca Chambers-Arway, and she is brand-new to our district, just like me. And then we have Mandy Jury, who's here. So Rebecca is at Dogwood, and Mandy is at the high school. So I'm going to lead us through some highlights, and then, should we have questions, I'm sure these ladies could help me out as well. So the primary core function of a counselor is to remove barriers for students in the academic, social, emotional, behavioral, and, you know, hurdles that might come their way. So every student's different, but we do have some universal practices that we see all the way kindergarten through 12th grade. So I'll highlight those as well. Also, career education is also a part of that. So just so you know, we just, we have some differences at the secondary level when it comes to elementary level, and I'm going to highlight those. But as you can see, consistently, we support students and staff and families. The Alignment to Strategic Plan are through these two objectives, and they've been highlighted multiple times, but it's academic, but it's also providing support for social-emotional learning. And Primary Responsibilities, this is just kind of a, what it's mostly, and like I said, it kind of evolves as students go through the system, what kind of supports they get in the classroom versus individual, what that looks like as we look at self-regulation skills and career edu, I'm sorry, what do you call that? Character education, then all the way through changing into career education and individual groups, individual plans. So working through multi-systems of support and just helping. So, working through multi-systems of support and just helping find areas that we can support classroom teachers. And then, they also, at a specific level, serve as our assessment and survey coordinator, and then they work with social workers, and we have three of those. For the most part, we have whole-class lessons at our younger learners, and then we also individualize and have small-group counseling lessons as needed, and we partner with families and staff members to ensure that anytime a student might need that level of support, we have that parental involvement with them. Crisis intervention, should that need, something that we need to post-look at situations or pre-look at situations to make sure that we have responses in place, they're a part of that. More secondary, master scheduling, the NCAPs and career liaisons, secondary, and then the dual-credit advanced placement, and then scholarships is more secondary. So, our ratios in workforce focus, you can kind of see, there's a couple of bubbles there. We're pretty consistent and right alongside, in line with what DESI standards have for M6, outside of Dogwood and outside of Southview. However, in those schools, we do have a full-time assistant principal that works lock-and-step with our counselors to provide additional supports in their schedules as needed. So, we're going to start off with highlighting some specifics to Carney High School counselors. We have Ashley James, Mandy Jurey, who's here with us tonight, and Janelle Vith. And they have yearly meetings with every single student. And during those meetings, you can kind of see in that chart, sophomores, it's more introductory, and pathway, looking into their pathway. Juniors, it's a little bit more focused on what MVAs they're working through, and then what their post-secondary pathways might be for them. And then seniors is really like finishing touches. What have you completed? What needs to still be done? What scholarships do we need to do? What are your, you know, what are you, what have you seen come your way, and how can we help you get there? That is solely focused on program of studies that we're also going to look at tonight, so I'm not going to really get in much to that. But a lot of it is enrollment timelines and making sure that we have what we need for our students, so that way they have that clear pathway to what they are customizing for their future. In addition, they also work with those outside agencies to make sure that our students who are interested in getting those career pathways have that opportunity at the junior and senior level, and even before that, if needed. So, at the junior high, we have Kaylee Stevie and Erin McMaines. So you can kind of see a little stair step down to the counseling program. We still have classroom integration in this time during Science and Social Studies. So there's individual lessons, or individual meeting time with their individual career, individual career plans, but then they also have that tier-one support going into the classroom. So it kind of is the best of both worlds there in getting them ready for that secondary high school world. And then there's just a few items that, in the building, they are building a sense of community, and they did the canned food drive and things like that. We have similar programs when it comes to our middle and elementary. At Carney Middle School, we have Holly Merriweather and Amanda Gray. And just even further, they bridge the gap between our elementary students going into that secondary world. So it starts off with a lot of team-building, and huddle-up is one of the things that we're starting at the middle school that now all of the elementaries have as well. So as you can see, that practice is going up through the course of our students' experiences, and the huddle-ups are really that team-building, that smaller touch with students in, outside of grade-level connections. And then, they also go in for guidance counseling lessons, and then they also meet with small groups and individual programs. So, that is highlighted there. And then this year, brand-new, is the Northland Youth Leadership Summit, so we were able to send some of our different groups to that, and it was a wonderful day to kick off just some of the leadership responsibilities that we look at for some of our sixth and seventh graders. And then at the elementary level, we have Rebecca, and we have Leanna Wilcox-Hawthorne. She is new this year as well, coming with a lot of experience, just like Rebecca. Elaine Tyner at Carney Elementary, and Meg Yarkowski at Southview, and this is her second year. So, highlights, this is pretty common and universal for all of our elementaries. The counseling lessons, you can kind of see, we really focused on zones of regulation, and that is showing how your body can respond with different emotions and feelings. And so, that's become common language, using Portrait of a Graduate to help out with that. Again, individual counseling lessons. Problem-solving teams are more universal and new this year, and essentially, we have the instructional coaches and our counselors, where teachers can bring individual students for some extra support if needed, and the administrators are involved as well. And we've seen that really speed up some of the interventions that some of our students have needed. They've also welcomed new students into their buildings based off of some of the district shifts, and collaborate with social workers, and they also serve as that testing and survey coordinator. So I just wanted to highlight some of the things that may be a little bit more activity-specific for Dogwood, Carney, Elementary, Hawthorne, and Southview. A lot of giving back to the community with food drives and things like that, but also bringing in assemblies and Red Ribbon Week, and then just helping build that foundation where Rebecca is new, coming into maybe having the minute meetings and one-on-ones. So, that is a quick overview. Trust me, Dr. Miller, I had a lot, lot, lot to say in this. I could speak forever about our counselors and pretty much all of our staff, but I wanted to keep it timely and succinct for you, and just open it up. Do you have any questions? I just wanted to thank these ladies for being here tonight, and the administrators who are also in the room that help support that work, and I appreciate your time, so.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
First one is setting the filing dates for the April election.
Move to approve the notice of filing publication for the April 7, 2026 election as presented.
Second?
All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Next, we have the 2026-2027 Program of Studies.
Move to approve the 2026-2027 Program of Studies as presented.
Second?
Are we going to have a presentation on this?
Yes. We actually just wanted to entertain any questions, but wanted to talk through the document that is actually on that page, has a page-long of just semantics of what we've, Dr. Gustafson and team have proposed changes. A lot of them have to do with added courses, or courses that maybe are on different timeframes, and then in addition, like are offered one year and then the following year, and we shift those around. And then, a lot, I guess about 50% of them were changed based on the college or university course alignments. In addition to that, we had looked at how we can, with the increased enrollment at the junior high level, how to keep up with the electives as well. So we added a couple of, in the course description, backed it from 10 to 12, all the way from nine to 12. So, that is some. In addition to that, on page eight and nine and 10, DESI came out with a new ICAP format for us. We will gradually put that into play as students go through, and it's literally formatting, but also including some of our MVAs that, and CTE work that we value at our high school level. Just open it up for questions. I think that's why I have Dr. Gustafson here. He can tell you all the ins and outs of it, and I can find out more information, and should you have questions.
I specifically have questions about smaller classes, if we have classes less than 10. How do we, are we considering putting those on every other year basis, something to make sure that we're really getting the most of the time? I just hear my kids say a lot, like, I have two or three kids, like, we have four kids, we have five kids.
Yes.
Like, I love that the teacher's passionate about that, I love that we offer that at the same time. Is that the best use of our resources?
That's a fantastic question, and yes, we have, prior to even you asking that question, the three of us in SLT, Dr. McMaines and Dr. Miller and I, had talked about that consistency across the board for what class sizes might look like, and then what challenges could that provide for some of our students who are on the specific tracks. So, that was kind of our initial response, and wanting to be fiscally responsible, but still give what our students are asking for and what they need post-secondary. So, that brought, when we looked at the course of studies, then with your question, we had already met, Dr. Gus and I had met to talk through that, because that was a question of practice we wanted to make sure that we were looking into diligently. And we did talk about some of the pockets, and so it was fact-finding. And even this morning, we met with Emmy and Dr. Gus and I, and we identified some areas of those smaller class sizes. There's already, I think, two or three, a handful that we aren't going to offer in the future, because we couldn't identify some students who are coming up from the ninth-grade level that would utilize an applied, like, math class or ELI class, so.
And some of my thought process, the process on that came from the work that Dr. McMaines has done with Career Ladder, like, you have to have at least, what, 10 students for it to count? So if 10 is the number, then let's create some consistency, and that's, make that all the way around, and just easier for everybody to understand.
And the great news is, is that was already the cutoff with that being the bare-bare minimum. I think, and you know, I think we can, you can talk to historically, but there were a couple of classes on there that were proposed as an applied level class to help students who are maybe needing that, needing that credit, but were maybe not getting it all the way through, and how can we best support those students? And we're finding that those classes were not utilized. So, already, I mean, we're looking through that now. Will it be a perfect process, and we're going to catch everything right this year? No, but it's been a great conversation starter for me to look into how we look, look at, you know, scheduling students. And the benefit here is that we are looking at program of studies very early, so that way we can get student interest in January, and then we can start looking at staffing, we can start looking at student tracks, what CTE, what MVAs, and then that way we can appropriately give students what they need without having just minimal classes.
It's a living document.
Yeah.
You can make changes if you need to later on, correct?
Well, yes, and the state of Missouri keeps coming out with more, here's another pathway. They changed this pathway, and, but with this, like, we looked at one today that would alleviate some of that, but it then also gives students more of a pathway in some of our interior design, but you also have to add this course. So to get this and to do this, here's a level series of four courses, we might offer two of them. So what does that look like? And so, we're studying that, we're also, you know, we have to look at certification. We can't just have student, or teachers teach something, they're not certified or experts because of quality teaching. So it's a big puzzle, and I know that it is. Sometimes we offer this elective this semester, maybe not the following semester, but then again, their sophomore, junior year. So, I do appreciate the question. It is a huge puzzle.
I don't envy your position to have to figure that out, but thanks for doing it.
No, it's all good, and I'm learning more and more about how it works in Carney. I've kind of come from a little bit of a smaller, where it is like whack-a-mole a little bit, nutshell, what do you call it, the game? But, you know, and just in looking at what we offer, it's a good balance, but you also have to consider, you know, class size versus is that student going to go off that track because we don't offer it whatever year? So, just have to really put the puzzle together, so.
Thank you.
Anything to add, Dr. Gus?
Because of all of our meetings about, we've been really looking at it, so thank you for your question, though.
All right, thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Ratification of letter of intent?
Move to ratify the letter of intent with behavioral health allies as presented.
Second?
All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Approval of over $50,000 purchase?
Move to approve the over $50,000 purchase from Heritage Tractor as presented.
Second?
Good evening. A little background on this would be, Facilities Department is asking for approval of purchase of approximately $53,000 for two pieces of equipment, a mid-sized tractor for us, and a stand-up mower for the grounds department, and these would replace pieces of equipment that have reached their, end of their useful life for us, or costing too much money to keep them going. So, that's the long and the short of that. Happy to answer questions about that.
I'm sure you've told us this before, how many acres do we have that we have to take care of?
I wish you wouldn't have asked, but I know, I know the paper it's on.
Yeah, I know it's a lot. I'm just curious, I mean, I think.
How about 256?
Okay, I'll take that. Okay, I'll take it. Just, I mean, I think people need to be aware, there's a lot more ground out there than you may think, so.
And I'm, sorry, go ahead.
I don't have one.
I was gonna, I mean, in the language, I see that it says that it's included in the budget is our, the final cost here that we're approving, is this in line with that budget, or are we slightly over, or?
Slightly under.
Slightly under, okay.
Eric was close, it was 227.
227.
Good job. That's from your documentary, Eric. All right. Any other questions? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Second, over $50,000 purchase.
Move to approve the over $50,000 purchase from Freedom Interiors as presented.
Second?
Okay, this purchase would be furniture that is designed to bring some equality to the, all four elementary schools after we have done our additions and renovations, where some schools got fifth-grade element, or fifth-grade furniture, and kindergarten furniture, and second-grade furniture, so we had a mix of those going in some schools. Our, our plan from the start was to eventually bring flexible, modern furniture to our elementary schools, and this would be a start to that process. Met with the principals of the elementary schools, fifth grade is a good starting point where some schools had that new furniture, others didn't. Same thing with kindergarten, there was some in some schools and others not having any. So, took kind of the directive we had talked about on not having that full purchase at the beginning of our bond spend, and this would be the first phase of furniture, holding off on a majority of it to the end of, of the bond. But this is kindergarten and fifth grade, flexible classroom furniture, 22 classrooms.
Eric, when we talk about furniture, what exactly are we talking about? Are we talking about desks? Are we talking about flexible seating? Like, when we say furniture, what does that mean?
Both of those things. Student desk, teacher desk, a portable table for teachers to use for computers, laptops, things like that. Seating itself, there's a combination of plastic chairs, roller chairs, wobble chairs, and a combination of desks that fit together, so they can be easily combined for groups of three, or six, or five, or two, the shape of them, some tables that have, so for the example, in the fifth-grade setup, there is a wide variety of sizes of kids that we found, the principals thought, and they really like it thus far, that you've got some tables that you can have bigger kids or more kids that need movement, they can stand up with them, shorter desks, and so on. So, you can see that there's a visual here. This is, looks to be a fifth-grade classroom. You can see that the desks are at different levels, the desks, the tables in the back are stand-up, they've got some, what do you call, bar-stool sized seating probably with those, and, so that's a fifth-grade classroom. These would be first through fourth, and you can fit those together. You can see, it looks like a table of five and a table of four. This is kindergarten classroom.
To be clear, though, we're just doing kindergarten and fifth tonight, right?
Correct.
And I see that the spend for Dogwood and Southview is higher. And I assume that's because you did Carney and Hawthorne as you did the renovation project. Is that right?
That is correct. Eight classrooms at Southview and Dogwood.
Okay. And you alluded to it, but just you, there's still more here in terms of you're going to come back and ask for first, second, third, fourth. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. But I just, I'm okay with furniture, and I like making sure that our elementary schools have the right tools as a part of what they have there. I just want to make sure that we don't decide not to do other projects for lack of fun. So I noticed, you know, on the October update, you know, we still have event pipe replacement and some of those things that aren't accounted for. So as we account for costs, and I'm sure some of this will come in under budget or over budget, but as we do that, you know, I would like to make sure that as we look at bond funds, we're taking into account the other things that we probably need to do from a deferred maintenance as well. So I just, I'll leave that with you in order to say that, let's make sure that we don't leave other projects that maybe have a bigger impact on and us wondering how we're going to pay for it after we get done with this portion of the bond.
Will do.
Eric, was there, was there an event that prompted, because back to Jason's point, I know in the October workshop, we had, we had looked at stuff and there, you know, we talked about a priority stack and such like that. Is there, is there some significant event that happened, or is this some kind of really like a great deal for us on this furniture that's prompted us to move this kind of to the top of that?
Well, here's the, I think that we took what we'd heard from the board on making sure we have everything taken care of. And we took a majority of the first, second, third, fourth grade, roughly 60 classrooms, and moved that to the, the plan would be move that to the back end of the bond once things are taken care of. And this gets us to what we felt like was an equal footing across the board on putting those in place. So everybody's got a kindergarten and a fifth grade. That's a, that's a starting point. And if we can't go any further than that at the end, then we've got at least our kindergartens and fifth across the district are the same as far as furniture goes. And, you know, hard to say what inflation does, but every year that, once we go past January 1st, everything goes up 3% in the furniture world, I'm told. So no, no, no specific event, but we, we thought we were trying to take what you had said and put it to useful work with what we, what we feel like we need to get done.
Yeah, just to reiterate what Eric said, we heard your feedback at the work session, considerably scaled that back by close to two-thirds. And he's done a nice job working with Jeremy to come up with that next round of deferred maintenance, because we hear that's a priority as well. We do feel that, you know, some of the flexible furniture, the shift away from some of the chairs that we've historically had, comfort's important, making sure that kids can attend for long periods of time. And I think setting up a suitable classroom environment's important as well.
Any other questions? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Agreements with American Digital Security?
Move to approve the agreements with American Digital Security as presented.
Second.
Questions? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Credit payment?
Move to approve the payment to Nick Vasquez as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Board member comments?
I just wanted to pass on to the board some hearsay. I was at, this time, I at least got the outside of the room's attention. I was at, this time last year, we were working on the boundary change for the school. And I was, went to the football game, I think it was Fri-, it might have been this Friday, it might have been the earlier Friday. We have so many playoff games at Carney, it's hard to remember. But I was, I was sitting in the, in the audience, and the people behind me were having a discussion. And so, of course, I eavesdropped, because that's what you do. But they, but what I picked up and what they were talking about was apparently their child had been one that had moved from one elementary school to the next elementary school. And I'm pretty sure that they were moving to Carney Elementary. And they were asking them how, the one parent was asking the other parent how that had went. And they couldn't have had more profuse praise for it, even going so far as saying, I don't know why we fought about this in the first place. So they were just talking about how wonderful, how great the principal was, and what a great experience they'd had so far. And so what I wanted to do is, I just wanted to take a moment and thank our elementary principals, thank our elementary counselors, our teachers, and everybody that, that didn't just happen because, because it's a great environment. That happened because people put some intentionality behind it to make sure that those students that moved had a good experience. And so I'm sure now I'll get emails from people that haven't had a good experience. But it sounds to me like that there are people out there having a really good experience, and I just wanted to say a special thanks to those that have made that happen.
Thank you. And I would say that's not hearsay. That's, that's fact. Okay. Anybody else have anything to say? All right. Important dates coming up. No school. Is that this week? Thursday, Friday?
The whole week.
Oh, no, that's the first of next week. That's right. We voted that in, didn't we? We changed the calendar. Yes, we did. No school Monday, Tuesday, professional development. Thursday, Thanksgiving break is the 26th to the 28th. Candidate filing begins 8 to 4 on December 9th. And anybody interested there should contact the district office. We did a seminar on that last week for interested parties. Our next board meeting is December 17th. And then we have a half-day on the 19th in preparation for the winter break, December 22nd to January 2nd. December 30th is the last day for candidate filing, 1 to 5 p.m. I'll bring cookies for Becky, because she gets to work that day. January 5th, there is no school for professional development. And January 6th is, classes resume for the second semester. Lots coming up, as well as Dr. Miller already mentioned, that football is still playing. So, and basketball is getting started, and all of our winter sports. Ms. Lattes?
Action for a closed session to immediately proceed the regular meeting in December, including any record or vote to discuss items and issues allowable under Section 610-021 of the Missouri Sunshine Law.
Second.
Rule call, please.
Matt Baker?
Yes.
Jason Plin?
Aye.
Jake Klingensmith?
Yes.
Christina Lindsay?
Bruce Schweitzer?
Yes.
Nick Vasquez?
Yes.
Darlene Mailey?
Yes.